Thank you all for coming in. The Columbian is pleased to welcome candidates for Vancouver City Council, position one. I'm Greg Jane, the editorial page editor, and I believe you've met the other members of the editorial board. Just so you know, reporter Katie Sword is sitting in. She won't be asking questions in this form, but might speak with you later. And we are videotaping this, and we will post it unedited on our website, in benefit of our readers. And one other item, there's another candidate for this position, Marina McColdrick, did not respond to our invitation, so that's why she's not here today. We didn't intentionally leave her out. We certainly invited her, but didn't hide her background. So, with the housekeeping out of the way, we'll get started here. And let's begin with some introductions. Just take one to two minutes to introduce yourselves and give a brief overview of why you are running for city council. And after that, we'll get into some specific policy questions. And we'll start at this end of the table.
All right. Hi, I'm Sarah Fox, and I'm running for city council because I believe that I bring a diverse set of talents and experiences to this position. I was born here, raised here. I left for the military, spent six years in the US Army, and returned to raise my family here and go to college. I worked in my family's business, a local construction company called Blueberry Services, and helped them grow their business before leaving them to work in local government as a city manager.
Thank you. Adam?
I'm Adam Scheller. I want to try and make a difference in Vancouver and help the homeless out and help the mental health. That's why I'm running.
Thank you. And move on.
Hi, I'm Mary Elkin. I've lived in East Vancouver since 2002, so a little over 16 years now. My husband John and I have an almost 13-year-old son, Robert. And I've been involved in my community for about eight years now, a little over eight years. I started in neighborhoods, and then I've worked my way through the school system with him, volunteering and getting involved in our community that way. I have a small business, a bookkeeping business, and we focus mostly on small, local businesses. And what I do is I help them understand financials, get their books in order so that they can get back to doing what they've got in the business to do and not have to worry about payroll taxes and financials and things like that. And I have a deep passion for this community. I've been involved for a long time, and I want to be more involved. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you.
Before I introduce myself, I want to first of all thank my fellow candidates. I want to also thank Sarah for her service, her military service to our country. Adam, I want to thank you for getting involved and wanting to improve Vancouver.
Yeah.
And Mary, I want to thank you for your work with neighborhoods. I'm Lori Lebowski. I currently serve on Vancouver City Council. Earlier this year, I was appointed to the city council out of 56 applicants. I think it's quite an honor, all of those people who were involved and want to serve our community. And since then, I've been working hard for the citizens of Vancouver and listening to what they, what the concerns I hear. I am for this community. I want to continue serving on council and serving the citizens. A little bit about myself, I have lived in the Pacific Northwest for a quarter of a century. Half that time has been in Clark County. I have lived, the first neighborhood I lived in Vancouver was Orenhurst Wood. I, my husband and I currently live in the Lincoln neighborhood. I helped start a nonprofit here called By Clark County. I believe that I am qualified to continue serving on city council because of my ability to get people to work together. Something I care about is solving problems. When I see issues, I go out and do something about it. By Clark County is a good example. We didn't really have an organization here that trained bicycle and pedestrian safety for kids, so I worked with some other people to start an organization. I've been married since 2009. I have two wonderful stepchildren, they're young adults. Justin is 24. He is a mechanical engineer for a high-tech company in Hillsborough. My stepdaughter Amanda, I'm very proud of her. She is 19. She is just, she'll be starting her junior year at the University of Washington in Foster School of Business. She's majoring in marketing and minored in Spanish. I care very much about Vancouver, and I believe in our future. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you again for, all of you for showing up and joining us. Many issues, I want to go over, one of the most pressing in the community in recent years has been housing and homelessness. So we'll start with, give us your thoughts about the affordable housing levy that was passed by voters. How do you think that is being spanned? What can we do differently as a community? We'll start at this end of the board.
Well, I was recently appointed to the Community Action Advisory Board, and what they do is they distribute state funding for community development block grants and for the home program. I'm very proud that one of the first things I did with that group was suggest that we have Vancouver on the agenda at every meeting. We have the largest population in terms of the cities. We have the largest population in terms of the homeless. We have the Affordable Housing Fund, so I got support for every time we focus on Vancouver is at least on the agenda. I think it's critical that Vancouver's at the table in terms of funding for homelessness. I believe in terms of what we can do better is outreach for that program in terms of just both contractors, the builders, and the homeless.
Looking ahead down the road, do you think this fund will be adequate? Would you advocate increasing it or going before voters to decrease it or, after six years, continuing it? What do you foresee is the future?
Well, it was just passed last year. It's a brand-new program. I think we need to see how it's working and monitor it.
Thank you. Mary, thoughts on homelessness?
You know, homelessness is a growing crisis in Vancouver, and it doesn't only affect the people that are actually homeless, but it affects the whole community. I was walking through a downtown neighborhood just a couple weeks ago, and there were tents in the streets blocking vehicles. Our sidewalks were covered with drug paraphernalia and human waste. And, you know, nobody should have to look like that. It's really sad.
So how can we solve it?
How can we solve it? Well, people are homeless for many different reasons. I think you can't just solve it with just one answer. I think it's going to take a lot of people, doing a lot of things, working together. One thing I'd like to see the city do more of, maybe with the Prop One funds, is act as a facilitator. We have so many people attacking this problem, you know, little groups that I think that their impact would be bigger if they could work together. So that's one thing I would like the city to act as a facilitator and see that happen.
Okay. Adam, how do you think about homelessness?
City council could donate land to help deaf humanity and make a new, having tiny houses on the land.
How much land do you think they would have to donate to actually make a difference?
I don't know how big enough land. Yeah.
Well, I think that homelessness has a lot to do with affordability, which also is a problem that is not just about the cost of housing. Cost of housing is rising, but you have wages that have it. So you have wages rising and the housing, you have the cost of living, the cost of gas, all of those have factored into people not just being homeless, but those that are on the verge of possibly losing their homes or losing their security because they're, they might be unable to afford next month's rent. So I think we have a whole group of our population that we haven't studied yet that are on the verge, that aren't, that are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. That needs to change. I think the city has been looking at a multifaceted approach to this with offering the grant program. They just advertised that this month to companies that will produce affordable housing, either creation or repair. That's a good solution, one of the good solutions that they're proposing, along with tracking. You know, like every year, when you ask whether or not we should spend more money, let's see how well we did. 2017, they put out a report, is it effective? How well did we do on the percentage of reduction of housing for those that are on the verge of being homeless? And then 2018, if we need to step it up, partnerships, like Mary was saying, we have a lot of partners out there working really hard, you know, ensuring that people have more security in their housing. I mean, that's a basic human right, and our city can't just look at it just by housing. This is what I'm saying. So let's take a look at all of these other factors as well, so we can do a total group.
So talking about affordability and that being related to wages and better jobs, how can the city facilitate that? What impact can the city have on wages and increasing jobs? How do you approach that?
Well, there's some of the really easy fixes are how much you pay your own employees. You know, just looking as a human leader, you know, having this discussion on whether or not a wage is a livable wage are, these are pretty easy calculations to look at. The data's out there. How much do you need to afford an apartment in this city? Are your own employees, the thousand or a thousand or more, something employees, are they making that wage? Are all of them making that wage? So we need to be a leader in what we're paying our employees. And then we need to step up and talk to our business leaders and make sure that they're also providing a livable wage to their employees. So I think just leading by example is something we can do. It's also how we contract, sort of provision to put in contracts for labor, not necessarily going for the lowest bid if we know that they aren't paying livable wages to do that work. So those are some of the things we can do.
If you looked at that, if you took a close look and decided that there needed to be an increase in wages for city employees, where's that money come from? Can you go to taxpayers and say, we need more money to pay our employees more?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's the first thing you have to look at. And they did just settle the contract, so I know that's not on the table right now. But I think, like I said, when you are looking at affordability in this city and where do you, where do the people that work for you live, I think those are things that you need to look at each time those contracts come up.
That's kind of a departure from the pay mentality that is dynamic in the private sector, having to do with internal equity and external competitiveness. And if you use philosophy and the aspiration to try to pay all city employees, well, do you end up in a situation where city employees are not in sync with the market?
I don't think so, actually. I'm, as I said, as representing employees in my workplace, I think that's an argument used to maybe ask more of your tactic about, well, how much do they want, how greedy could it be? I think that when you take a look at wages, you are comparing it to comparable jobs in the private sector. But I have worked for companies that, I'd almost like to say that some of the private companies I've worked for act more like nonprofits. They've had really good bosses that look at the wages and the benefits and want to make their employees happy. And I know we have companies, more companies like that in Vancouver. So I just having those discussions about, you know, companies that aren't necessarily out for the highest profit for some faraway investors, but they're looking at their employees and making their lives better. And just, we can highlight those companies. I know we do highlight some of them, I've seen, you know, in the paper, mentioned at city council meetings, but doing more of that tends to encourage others to policy.
Sarah, would you like to mention a couple of these?
Oh, just on the top of my list, I'd say companies like McCain's, because you know, do a good job of that, and that's just because of our world. You have companies like OTAC that highlight their employees. You also have companies like CJ, a company that are doing great things for the community right now by supporting our day center. And yeah, just talking about.
And that, actually, that kind of dovetails into, I'm just curious, in talking about salaries for city employees, talking about city budget, Adam, do you happen to know what the city of Vancouver's annual budget is?
No, not really.
Mary?
It's a little over a billion dollars.
Is that right?
Yes.
Sarah, does that sound right?
Yeah, 1.0 is around four billion. I think I need approximately, it's just fine.
That's pretty close to a price.
One of the things I got to work on recently with Katie here was a story about the Heights redevelopment plan, and I was really struck with that and what the vision is for up there. And I'd like to hear a little bit from the candidates about what they think could be the potential for up there and what they'd like to see. I know that there's still a public scoping process, isn't really getting started, but I'm wondering if you have some ideas. So maybe, Mary, you could start?
Yes, I'm really excited about this project because it's the first one that we've had closer to the east side where I live in a long time. But I think the important thing that we need to do, that the city, I think, is doing a great job of, is reaching out to the neighborhoods in that area and asking them what they want their neighborhood to look like. I'm excited to see a mix of businesses that would offer services for the neighbors, especially with our aging population, that they could, they could have places to walk to or that are easily accessible. Great urban areas, community areas, because there's not a lot of that in central and east Vancouver. Mostly, most of that is located on the west side of Vancouver, which is great, so we'd like to have some attention, I think, on the other side of Vancouver. Six out of seven people on council right now live on the west side, so I'm really anxious to have a voice on council and advocate some of the people that do live on the east side of our town, because our neighborhoods are a lot different than those on the west side. For instance, public art, I can think of five great places for some public art right now in central and east Vancouver. So I was talking with Jen Mader about that, that would be great. The Heights district would be a great location for some of that. Did I answer my question?
Laura, would you like to add anything?
Well, I think it's a very, I agree with Mary. It's a very exciting opportunity. We've had presentations at city council about the Heights plan. There was an open house last Saturday. We had hundreds of people attend. I'm excited about the engagement in the plan. I agree with Mary, it should be a mix of uses. It's an opportunity for businesses. We talk about affordable housing. I think we need to have housing for all levels of income. We need to increase housing choice in Vancouver. This place, this area would be a great opportunity for that. I think it can tie into what's already happening in that neighborhood. If you look at Harney Heights, if you look at Garrison Square, that's already redeveloping, and there are a lot of great businesses that have gone in Garrison Square. Harney Heights has been some good redevelopment, so I believe it would be a great part of that. It could tie into the energy already occurring there with the redevelopment. So as a county planner and working on big projects and long-range planning, it's exciting to be part of that project. I have lived in east Vancouver, so I understand what Mary's saying and appreciate the issue as far as how different the areas are. Arts, arts would be a good opportunity. We just recently passed an arts and heritage plan. It would be good to have art there. You also have MacArthur Boulevard. I was involved in that project a few years back where we, there were buffered bike lanes and...
Bike lanes, yeah.
And I think that's been a great opportunity, so it needs to be multimodal. You also have the Vine, which is the next Bus Rapid Transit project. That is a great opportunity to tie in the land use and the transportation. So I'm very excited and looking forward to seeing what happens in the Heights. And it's hundreds of acres. It's a large project, so it's a fantastic opportunity.
Did they forget to say anything? Sarah?
I was just waiting my turn. Well, from my perspective, like I said, I grew up right here, and that used to be, you know, the place we would go shopping. I have a lot of memories of it being a thriving center, actually, of that side of town. I got my driver's license there. You know, we'd go into Safeway and the Hallmark store and all of those things, and so seeing it come alive again is going to be great for the neighborhood, but I'm getting more interested in what the neighbors have to say, the ones that live there now. I know that it's, there's a lot more mix of cultures out there than there ever has from in the past, and so tying together our past and our inner business, it'd be an interesting project.
Me and my brother live up there. It's looking great up there, and I agree with Mary, and yeah, it's looking great.
One thing, and somebody mentioned the Vine and transportation. A larger view of transportation, what do you think should be the city's transportation priority? And I'm going to mix issues together here. What are your thoughts about new I-5 bridge, or would you prefer a third bridge? And also thoughts on light rail? So kind of a broad question.
Okay, I get the bridge question first. I love it. I think that we definitely need a new I-5 bridge.
Before a third bridge?
Before a third bridge, yes. The problem with the third bridge is, again, where to put it, and I think we already have an existing bridge that needs replacing. Everybody can agree on that, so I think we're more likely to work with Oregon and maybe the federal government, hopefully the federal government, in order to facilitate that being done. I think we would be short-sighted to build a new interstate bridge without light rail. You know, it's different. When I was, when I turned 16 many, many years ago, you know, I could not wait to get my driver's license. That's, I couldn't wait for that freedom, or in fact, I'm remembering when you got your driver's license. Talking with the youth of today, that's not a priority for them, you know? So in talking to the kids today and our grandkids, thinking about them, I think we have to have some light rail, some more public transportation options in Vancouver, and of course, for the bridge that would tie into Portland and Maryland.
Adam, what are your thoughts on that?
We need a new bridge and no tolls and maybe, maybe no, I don't know about light rail yet, but maybe light rail or whatever, whatever.
Sarah?
Well, I'm definitely, I said the majority about the fact that we need a replacement bridge. I am not supporting a third bridge. I believe that more roads does not solve the problem. Just put more cars on the road, pushing the, you know, all of these problems, just amplifying them by 10, 15, 20 years, whatever that is, but you're not, you're not making any progress towards our problem. You're also very likely destroying neighborhoods. That's what bridges do too. You put in a new freeway, it must be replacing that space. There was something there before that came along. So I wouldn't be supporting a third bridge. And transportation, we do need a lot of options. I commuted across that bridge for about three years, and I took the bus most of the time. That made the most sense to me, having a really easy, fast way to get across the bridge, whether or not it's light rail. I know there's a lot of opposition to that, or having it as a baited lane for mass, for rapid transit. All of those things, I think, are details that can be worked out as we move along, and they don't need to be the issues that stop this progress, because if we started today, this bridge has been built for 10 more years, so let's get going on this and get a bridge.
Now, you acknowledge that there is a lot of opposition to light rail. If it came down to the city council, would you solely look at public opinion, or would you be willing to, would you be in favor of light rail strong enough to push it through, even if a majority of the people opposed it?
I've worked the last 13 years of my career as an urban planner that works towards consensus. So if we do outreach in the community, a good outreach, like we should be doing on any of these issues that are that important, if we have made sure that everyone's represented in those decisions, because that's, that's what a good statistician is willing to do, is make sure that we are getting statistically significant results on that data. If they are fully against this light rail, I am not going to push for it. I believe that's something that, like you said, if you have a designated lane for rapid transit, that could be changed to light rail sometime down the road. It does not need to stop a whole other bridge.
Lori?
Yes. So I have spent the last 25 years as a transportation planner. That's my job with the county. I also work for the Oregon Department of Transportation, so I have a lot of experience with transportation projects, large projects, with the state of Oregon. I've been working with the city council on responding to the value pricing project with the state of Oregon. And I think regardless of what Oregon does as far as value pricing, we're going to need a bridge. The interstate I-5 bridge stretches from Mexico to Canada. There's one drawbridge. It's right here. I really liked the Columbian article from May 7th where you were talking about the bridge, and according to the information that you all got from the Washington State Department of Transportation, freight traffic is going to increase 77% on that bridge in 2030. Can you imagine that? As bad as that bottleneck is right now, it's going to get much worse. So we need a new bridge, and as I said, regardless of what Oregon does as far as value pricing. Portland and Vancouver are both river cities. We rely on the freight traffic and the commerce traffic on that bridge. We're eventually going to have to work together. As Sarah mentioned, we need to develop a consensus on that bridge. As a transportation planner, I do feel strongly about public process. An issue that I've seen, and one of the reasons that I applied for the position on city council, and I'm very honored to serve on city council, is that I think elected sometimes say, oh, well, this needs to be the solution, when we do need to get stakeholders involved. We need to get the public involved before we develop the consensus on the solution. So bottom line is, we need to replace the I-5 bridge. That is the priority. Going back to the Columbian article from May 7th, you were talking about by 2050, the increase of traffic. If nothing's done, we're talking about 15 hours of good luck every day. We need to solve that problem. So I've been working with city council on value pricing, working with the mayor, on working with the state legislature on how to get a project. The bottom line is, is we need, we need a project for that bridge. And as far as a third bridge, I think that's kind of far out there. I think getting, replacing the I-5 bridge is the priority, and it's going to take a lot of work. Oregon is going their own way with the value pricing. We need to get Oregon back to the table. We need to work, city of Vancouver, there's very little we can do, so it is reliant on working with the Washington Department of Transportation and the state of Oregon. And I think it's good what we've been doing with city council on getting all the parties together.
So I have a question, Lori. As a transportation planner for the last 25 years with the county...
I've worked the last 15 years with Clark County, but I've worked in transportation planning primarily for 25 years.
So were you a part of that when the beginning of the CRC started?
I was not.
You weren't, okay.
I was not.
I just was curious about your thoughts on how much community input was in that project, because you thought that, I just thought, the feeling that you didn't think that there was an effort.
No, I, I believe there was a lot of community input as far as that project. There was a lot of work done as far as, in my opinion, as far as public involvement.
So how, but you mentioned that you would want that again. How would that look to you?
Well, that's a good question. I think we can take parts of the project that can translate, and what I mean by that is you have the structural analysis of that project that you can use again. We don't, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Let's take parts of that project and pass that along. However, we're going to need public involvement as far as finding a solution, and it's, it's not going to be easy. We have a different philosophy from the federal government. We don't have an infrastructure package. Typically... Typically, as far as federal funding for projects, it's usually eighty percent federal government, twenty percent of state and local government. The last I heard, and I did go to DC earlier this year with council members Stober and Turley to meet with Jamie Hurr, Butler, and Senator Maria Cantwell and Senator Patty Murray. And one of the things that I did bring up was that bridge project, that we need to have that. But what they're talking about now in DC as far as federal spending is flipping that, flipping that formula. So then you're looking at eighty percent state and local money and twenty percent federal. And nothing's set in stone. But that's, that will be very, very difficult as far as funding a bridge project. And we'll have to have a different.
And I'm sorry, you say, would you be in favor of light rail?
I would be in favor of light, well, number one, let me say this. I agree with what everyone else has said. There must be a transit component to the I-5 bridge. That transit must have its own right of way. That's how you get time savings as far as that, that transportation option. But I think the public involvement component is that, what is the support? Is it a bus rapid transit? What I've heard lately from the federal government is that they prefer bus rapid transit over light rail. However, if our community says we want light rail, then I would, I would support that. And I don't know if I should say this or not, but I think.
Oh, go ahead.
I think in terms. I think in terms of transportation, we also need to think about mobility as a service. If you look at autonomous vehicles, if you look at communications, we all have smartphones. They're all linked. We're getting to the point where costs of communication are approaching zero. You're looking at a lot of electronic vehicles. And something I've advocated on council is really thinking about the future of transportation. I think it's going to be a service and that it's not going to be just one mode. It's going to be, I need to get somewhere and I'm going to get on my smartphone. And maybe the other component is shared vehicles. So I, what I support is also looking at future options. Autonomous vehicles aren't ten years out. They're not even five years out. As we know, and as we've seen, other cities in the country are already testing them. And we don't know the implications of that. And there are many, whether it's parking or congestion.
I have a quick question. You're out of this memory, but I'm just curious about how many city council, Vancouver City Council meetings you think you've attended in the last year or so?
In the last year or so? Not when I got on the front page for being a frequent flyer a few years back, yeah.
So frequently, that's.
Yeah, yeah, frequently. Not as much as I would like to. I've been forced to watch them, forced to watch them at home due to family, you know, obligations and work obligations. But I'm always in tune. I'm, if CV TV charged a fee, I would definitely be up there.
Adam, have you, have you attended a lot of those?
Uh, somewhat, somewhat, yeah.
How many, think, like what?
Probably, I'm not, I'm not, about probably two.
Thank you. The first one I attended was the one where they were interviewing me to fill in the seat, along with the other six of us that were lucky enough to be chosen out of fifty-six. So that was the same. Great, actually, the three of us.
Yes.
We'll have to tell the story to our grandchildren. I worked during that timeframe of the workshops for city council. And often, the city that I work for in Canis has our meetings on the same exact night. And so I follow Vancouver City Council and I read the minutes and the agendas. I don't like to watch a lot of TV, so that's how I keep up to date with what is happening.
Do you think it poses any kind of conflict to work for the county or the city of Canis? So would you be able to represent Vancouver's interests? Sometimes they're not totally in compliance with the county or what the other cities want. How do you, how do you do that? And how do you maintain your independence from your job?
Well, I would say that, first of all, if you're involved in your community, you're going to have, you're going to have a conflict of interest at some point, whether you work for a private business or you work for the public sector. I think that, actually, I'm proud to say that with city, with the Clark County, I drafted conflict of interest and rules of procedure for the planning permission. It's about managing that conflict. I think part of the issue is just communicating what I do in Clark County. I am a staff person. I am a planner. I do not make decisions. I do research. I prepare staff reports and I make recommendations. I think it's important to, as far as ethics, to work with the prosecuting attorney. I've done that at Clark County and I do that at the city of Vancouver. So basically, it's looking, you know, at what is the potential conflict? What is the issue?
So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, actually, Lori brought up a good point about ethics. As a, I'm a certified planner. And I also lead, I'm the president of the Southwest Section of the Urban Planning Association. And to be a certified planner, every year you take a course, to our course in ethics of planning. And one of the key components of being an ethical planner is that we are working for the common good, the greater good. Our clients aren't just, if you're in the private sector or a person in the public sector, isn't just the person that pays you, that you're working for, the entity. And so if I was working on a project for the city of Canis that somehow has some kind of link for some of our inner local projects, maybe like the shoreline plan or something, one of those lines, where I was sitting on a board as a planner from the city of Canis and I was also an elected official for the city of Vancouver, I don't see how that would ever be a conflict of interest or an ethical dilemma because I'm not working for myself.
Speaking about planning and a vision for the city, I'm curious, really quick, what are your thoughts about the proposed development of the academy? Where should they go with that? Adam?
I don't have any thoughts right now.
Okay.
I think they've done a lot of great public outreach on that. My personal, what I would like to see done, is that the question, or?
Yeah, what do you think about the plans that they do have?
I like the plans that they do have. It incorporates the history of the academy with a vibrant downtown, which is something that we need to have in Vancouver to attract other businesses to come and land here.
Lori?
Yes, I would agree with Mary. I'm excited about the redevelopment of the academy site. It's a historic site, so we should honor the history of that, of the academy. Actually, I used to be the staff person for the Historic Preservation Commission a long time ago for the county. So I appreciate protecting, we are really a cradle of culture here in Vancouver with the fort. And so I think that we have to connect to that history of the fort. Living in the, on the west side and living a mile from downtown, I love seeing what's happening in downtown. So I think connecting with the redevelopment of downtown is a great opportunity as well as honoring the city, I mean, the history. But having a mix of uses on that site, I think would be fantastic. The connection to the fort, it's in terms of transportation connections and bike and pedestrian connections, that's a fantastic site to, for that redevelopment, to have a new, a new community on that site.
Sarah?
It's funny, we just got, I'm talking about conflicts of interest, and I realize this is probably a question I shouldn't be answering for the record because I am the vice chair of Historic Preservation Commission. And next month, this project will come for us at a public hearing. So I do support the preservation of history in our community and, and our resources, ensuring that any changes to a site are sensitive in nature as to what's happening on the site. I think we'll have to keep all of our comments off the table today.
Adam, what are you?
I agree with Mary about the history of it, and I agree with Mary.
And also, near that same area, there were plans for a Vancouver Public Schools to put a downtown school. Does that strike you as a good idea? Mary?
You know, I'm going to leave that to the, to the schools as far as where the best sites are. I think they're doing a good job right now over in Evergreen of doing that. I know we've set aside some locations that would best with the population. As of right now, I mean, I can see planning for the future for the children that live downtown, but another part of me is a mom. And I see the things that are happening in our downtown, and I see some of the homeless problems that we have right there on that street. And to think about me sending my seven-year-old daughter or son down that street to go to school, I have concerns about that.
Adam, what are your thoughts about a downtown school?
Maybe if we clean up the homeless problem, maybe it might be a good idea about having a school down there. That'd be cool, maybe.
Sarah?
I love the idea, actually. I love that site tonight. For me, I just, I can imagine that there's going to be some great partnerships there, having that library right in the store, being able to take the kids on walking field trips to the National Historic Site just down, just down the street, to the parks that are right in our downtown area. Just a lot of opportunities there that actually would probably save the school districts some money versus having to bus them everywhere. Our, our historic museums right downtown. And just naming all of the nice, the resources that would be available to a school in that vicinity would be wonderful.
Lori?
I agree with Sarah. I do believe we need to have a downtown school. The bond was recently approved and that was, that was part of that bond. So we need to honor that. Actually, people I talked with at Vancouver School District, they looked at the example of the Pearl District in Portland. So in the Pearl District, they thought it's going to be all double income, no kids. And to their surprise, there were actually a lot of, a lot of children. And they were scrambling to find a school for all these kids living in the Pearl District neighborhoods. So I think it's very forward-thinking of the school district to know that with all the redevelopment that's going on in downtown, if you think about it, literally, the ground is changing underneath our feet between the next phase of the Vancouver Centre and the waterfront development and the past academy redevelopment. Vancouver's going to change very, you know, before our eyes fairly quickly. And part of that change is providing facilities for, for students. So I think it's great that the school is, district is forward-thinking on that issue. We need a downtown school, just a location. We have to honor the bonds for the library. We have to honor the financing for that site. So I think we need to work in a way that we honor past obligations as far as financing and at the same time locate, finding a good location for the school district. As far as homelessness, we do, there is a camping ordinance. There is a requirement that homeless people have to move their camps. And I, I am not as concerned about the homeless issue. We need to obviously have security at schools for students.
When those long-lost friends and relics come out to visit you for the first time in fifteen years or whatever it's been, where's the first place you take them?
The first place, I take them to Esther Short Park. And I take them to the river. We're, we're a river city.
Okay, how about you, Mary?
I usually take them to an event at Esther Short Park.
Okay. Adam, where do you take them?
Maybe Esther Short Park and then maybe the Fort Vancouver.
No wonder that place is so busy over there.
Fourth of July.
Okay, Sarah, do you see you over there too?
That's, actually, that is, I always think that's like the nerdiest thing to say, but I do take, I take friends and family to the fort. I grew up going there and I had a very good friend of mine that used to give tours as part of a volunteer, she was part of the volunteer tour growing up. And even, I think she even wrote a coloring book for children about a rabbit that lived at Fort Vancouver. And so I just spend a lot of time there and I love sharing with people that I can do that.
How about more annexation for the city agenda? Do you support that?
I'm certainly, oh, I couldn't tell the player pointing. I'm not a huge fan of annexation. And I say that because I believe that we have a lot of options going back to the growth of our city and just pushing it out to the limits prematurely is a bad idea for a lot of reasons. They have to take thirty years down the road, fifty years down the road would be even better as to how we're going to manage housing jobs and parks. That's all we've been talking about today. And if we gobble it all up for the next ten years, we're going to be, so even though I might not be here fifty years from now, I'd like to thank that they will thank us on the city council for being forward-thinking and planning for their future.
I'm not sure about that one. Mary?
I think that, Sarah makes some great points. I believe that right now, we're kind of struggling to catch up from the annexation that we did on the east side. I mean, I see so many neighborhoods that are trying to have sidewalks. We have speed limits that are still thirty-five miles an hour in certain areas, like on my house. Soon to be lowered to twenty-five, hopefully. I think that unless the residents of that part of the county were just really wanting to become members of the city of Vancouver and it made fiscal sense to do so, we could still pay for our core services by doing that, of course, I would look at it. But I think that we need to take care of our own first.
As far as annexation, I, what I would say is it has to be done in a thoughtful manner. I agree with the annexation of Green Meadows. I think it was balanced between commercial, commercial land uses and residential. Due to our state tax laws, residential land tends to be a net loser. Developed residential land is a net loser. So we have to do it in a balanced approach between residential and commercial and industrial. We need to do, we need to do annexation in a way that's sustainable for the city budget. I do not agree with just going out and annexing and making the city larger for the sake of making the city larger or sprawl. I would not agree with that. I do agree that we need to ensure our city is whole as far as our budget before we think about annexation. We no longer have an annexation blueprint with the county. One of the things I bring to the city council is my experience at the county. I'm about cooperation. I'm passionate about that. That's one of the reasons I applied for the vacant seat. And one of my goals on council is to bring the city and the county together. We, we need to do that. We're in a time of limited resources. The cities and the county need to work together as a team. So as far as annexation, it needs to be balanced and thoughtful.
So we'll call this one the Lou Rencasio Memorial Question. Because Lou would ask this if he were here.
What again?
The next question is, we'll start with Lori. If you were not in this race, who would you vote for?
If I were not in this race, who would I vote for?
Which one of your opponents would you vote for?
Which one? Gosh, it's a, they're very good, everyone's a very big.
It's a tough question.
It's a tough question.
It's going to be a tough question for me too.
And so which, who do you say?
Oh, gosh. I think I would, I would vote for Sarah. We're both planners and so I would vote for Sarah.
Mary?
If I were not in the race, I would probably vote for Sarah as well. I like her service to our country. I think that brings a unique perspective. I would prefer me, I think that's an important voice to hear.
Adam, who would you vote?
We've got good candidates, so I might lean towards probably Sarah Fox.
Sarah?
Wow. That is somewhat exciting. That's very, very humbling, actually, to hear in this fictional situation. That is a little, that's very humbling, actually, to hear in this fictional situation. But I would say that I would vote for Mary. I really do think that we need more voices from the east side of our community. She has such a love for her neighborhood and being a leader of neighborhoods, along with a passion for safety, the firefighters and the police. So if I wasn't running, I would vote for her.
Thank you. That's a hard question.
Hard question.
But we've got good candidates here.
We did?
Yeah.
Well, move along then. Give us your final pitch, or why voters should support you, and we'll start with Lori.
Well, I believe I've done a good job since I've been on city council, and would like the community's support to continue serving. Since I've been there, I have reached out to the community and heard what people had to say about what are the issues that are important. And I've already accomplished a lot since I've been on city council, including going to Washington DC and lobbying for a fire truck for the city, along with my fellow counselors and with our mayor. Actually, also, an issue I care about deeply is aging of place, and I had advocated for some ordinance and lower permit fees to support people to renovate their homes so they can stay in their homes, and I got council support for that. I believe at this time I'm the best candidate due to my twenty-five years of experience. Transportation are big issues, and I have the experience, and I've worked with, worked for the Oregon Department of Transportation, so I believe I'm the one. I've already asked tough questions of the Oregon Department of Transportation on their value pricing project. Actually, I had an issue with the tolling on I-5 on the lanes near the bridge, and if you look at the workshop from council, I asked about that because their own, their own model showed that I-5 northbound in the afternoon, value pricing wouldn't fix that problem. And I'm proud to say that right now the recommendation, ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation dropped that recommendation. So I want to continue that work advocating for the city of Vancouver. I believe that I'm the one who can bring the city and the county together and other cities. So that's what I have.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, do you have any endorsements you'd like to mention?
National Women's Political Caucus. I've been endorsed by, let's see, council chair Mark Bolt, former county commissioner Betty Sue Morris, court commissioner Don Orange, former city council member Larry Smith. I've been endorsed by current city council member Alicia Tupper, treasurer Doug Lasher.
Okay, thank you. Mary, give us your final pitch.
I believe I'm the right person for this job, because I've been doing a version of it for the past eight years. I've been out in the community, engaged, volunteering my time, bringing people together in neighborhoods. If you look at a neighborhood, it's like a small city. You know, as a neighborhood leader, I have to listen to people that I don't agree with, that I don't like sometimes, and, you know, and unite these people for a common goal. So that's something I have been doing for eight years, and I'm pretty good at it. We've had some vibrant and strong neighborhoods in Vancouver as a result of that. I have been engaged in our schools, and I've brought parents into the fold and gotten them engaged in what is going on in the school and their children's education. And I think that's something that would transfer over well-
Yes.
-into city council, because we need to have more of our citizens engaged, especially our young people. You know, we're starting to see a rise in that, and that's a great thing, because we have some huge problems to solve. And the more people that are engaged, and the more people that we listen to, the more likely we are to solve them. I have a passion for this community. I chose to raise my son here. I want him to be able to stay here. I want to see the economic development continue to flourish here, so that he can attend schools in Washington, and then when he's done, actually be able to stay here and find a job where he can raise a family. I love the history of Vancouver. I've been endorsed by our police, our firefighters, and our educators. I think those three endorsements there are the heart of my campaign and my passion for Vancouver. Yeah, I, I love working with people one-on-one and getting out and meeting people. I do. And I believe that we need to take a look at our budget and see, make sure we are spending resources wisely, and that we do not just create new taxes every time that we need to solve a problem. We do need to staff our public safety at a little higher level than we are now, even though fifty-one percent of our current budget is spent on public safety. Now, that doesn't mean if our fire department is staffed at half, we need to hire twice as many firefighters. No, that's definitely not what I'm saying. But there are things that we can do, and I've worked on commissions in the past where we've made sure that we are being the best we can with the taxpayer dollar. Are we using every dollar the best way we can? For instance, the SUV units that go to the priority one and two medical calls. I mean, that's vital. We're saving money right there by not sending a big truck or an engine to every medical call, because over eighty percent of our calls are EMS calls. I also do believe that I have written a voice of small business that is lacking in the council. I am a small business owner, successful for over fifteen years, it's helped support my family. So we have some, we have a nonprofit business person, but we really don't have any small businesses, and I think small businesses are essential for Vancouver at this time. So I respectfully disagree. I think that working for the county is a conflict of interest. These are great, smart women that care about this community as well. We are a great panel of advocates, and they're nice people. I enjoy their company. When this is over, I really would love to become friends with these women, and hang out with them. But things like annexation, that's a county issue. Are you going to annex them? At the end of the day, that's your employer, and I think that does create a conflict. And I would hate not to have a voice on Vancouver, because they had to recuse themselves because of questions and things like that.
Mary, are you related to any Elkins in the fire service?
I am not. I am not. My son, though, he has a dream maybe of one day becoming a firefighter, but we'll see how that goes. His dreams need improvement.
That'd be cool, that'd be cool.
Thank you, Lori.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity.
Adam, give us your final pitch, why should voters support you?
Because I have compassion for homeless people and mental health and kids. I have compassion for kids, and that's why I'm going to be a good candidate, too.
Great, thank you. And any endorsements?
No, actually, Uptown Barrel Room said they could support my campaign. Uptown Barrel Room, yeah.
Great, thank you. Sarah, give us your final pitch.
Well, I believe I'm the best candidate for this seat, because I have, through such a diverse range of experiences to the job. As I've mentioned before, I was born and raised here. I bring my military experience. I bring small business as well. It is very important. It's ninety-five percent of our economy, and my family's still running their business, and so I'm still involved with it to this day. I also bring planning. I'm a city planner, not a county planner, but I do bring fourteen years of experience in planning, and it's long-range and current planning. And so part of that job, most of it, is listening to people, reaching consensus. I bring a strength, my strength is being able to understand a diverse range of people and their issues, and finding the solutions that work. I have a passion for the city of Vancouver. I am raising my children here, they've gone to the area's schools, and I am invested here. I want to see that it continues to grow authentically, vibrantly, with all of us that have chosen this as a place to live, to also be able to work here. I would love for us, this is just kind of the vision, but I would love for that flow of traffic. I'm tempted to see some progress, that sixty percent of the commuters are sixty thousand, is it? Lori probably has the statistic down pat, but is not going to Portland for jobs. I want more jobs here, and that would be, you know, a goal of mine in the next ten, twenty years, and it could actually show some progress on that end as well.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us. Thank you.